We'll get started, and this is a public court session of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Call for today, Judge Pruitt, would you open with the prayer, please?
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the blessings that we have had that we do not deserve. We ask your presence here today and that you bless every person here with your wisdom and your discernment, and that your spirit be present here today as these public servants make choices to benefit the people whom they serve here in Pike County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let me announce again for the press or anybody else that we're going to end this year with a balanced budget. Regardless of what you read in the paper, or you've seen on television, or heard on the radio, the finances of this county is in good order. And if anybody's got any information difference, they need to provide it to us because we have a balanced budget required by the Kentucky Revise Statute. Every county, every city in this Commonwealth are required to have a balanced budget. Having said that, we're going to move on to the next year's budget. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with Mrs. Thomas at District, and we're asking her on behalf of this court to file two applications for funding as we work on this budget. And Judge Hayes, I might refer to you just briefly. I think that you have read that bill, House bill, I don't remember the number, the House bill on severance tax. There was some misunderstanding when the state press came out with their explanation of what had happened in regard to the coal severance tax and the mineral tax in Pike County. But what happens, they just turned it back to the Pike County Fiscal Court. So Judge Hayes, I think you've read that statute, and I think you agree with what the statute states.
I do, Judge. We are plowing new ground. Pike County is the only county out of 120 in which this was done. That is not specific appropriations for specific projects enumerated by our legislators. There is a fund of money in, what is it, two-point, what?
I know the exact.
How many ever million it is, Judge?
Two plus million.
It's just simply appropriated to the Pike County Fiscal Court. And so, it's my opinion upon reading it, and some bureaucrat in Frankfurt may disagree, probably will, but that the court has to set the priorities on the expenditures of that money. I hardly see how else it can be done. Now, there has to be approval of the applications for that money, done in Frankfurt, and our legislators, assumed to be one member of this court, have to kind of hear about it and concur with what's asked for. But I was under the initial impression that anybody who wanted, who was eligible to receive severance tax money could make application and get that, for example, the City of Pivotal. But I think if the City of Pivotal, just by way of example, wanted to submit an application, that application would have to come to this court since the money was appropriated to this court. That's my legal opinion, Judge. It remains to be seen whether or not everyone else agrees with that.
Tomorrow, Mrs. Thomas will be here for a meeting to file two applications for this court, which is the top priority as it's set, and that is the bonding indebtedness, am I correct in stating that way, for the justice building. And the other one is the property of virtue. And she'll be here tomorrow to discuss that with the Ad District. She's a grant person, a great grant runner. She will, we're going to talk to her about preparing those two things. If, in fact, that is, and this court before has stated that that is our top priority, that that comes off the top, then we take a look at, as time goes on, what this court approves for projects under the 2013-2014 budget in regard to severance tax and the mineral tax. We, I submitted a balanced budget, and I did that and complied with the regulations promulgated by the state that requires the county judge executive to present a budget by a certain time each year, and that that budget be balanced. And I presented a balanced budget. It cut nobody off. It kept the same number of employees that the county had, and it didn't call for any other adjustments whatsoever in regard to the budget. We all know that budgets are a projection, and there was projections made when I submitted what I submitted, a balanced budget, there was projections made, only projections. But I would have to say this, that those projections, that Treasury, myself, and Finance Director with the help of Charles Carlton and many others, that we was on target and did this year with a balanced budget. So we were blessed to do that. So we began today. I think we have two public meetings, and I think we went into closed session on both of those to discuss any personnel matters, or no personnel matters to be discussed in public, if there are any. Then we request that we go into closed session and discuss those, that is, by the Kentucky Revise Statute again. That not to be discussed in public. So the, so we're going to go from here, and first, we want to give you some of the pluses in regard to what's going on in our oil and gas and limestone, and what's going on in coal production in the county with what research and has been done. And Jim, I think you will bring us up to date in regard to that.
We have heard, thank you, Judge. There have been a couple of good pieces of information that have come our way in the last couple of weeks that bode well for a little improvement in our economy here. In particular, the thermal market for coal, which is utility use and burning under boilers, appears to be expecting a $3 increase per ton of coal during the fall months. We got that information from our friends at Alpha Financial Resources when they were in the other day on a different subject. Now, related to Pike County coal production, there's another aspect that's important. As we all know, James River Coal is in bankruptcy. We also know that the McCoy Elkhorn Division, which is a Pike County component, we were told by, also by the Alpha people, that they believe that the Pike County component is going to be severed from the other producing aspects of James River, and they expect it to be led by one of their executives as part of a purchase acquisition. That he seems to have a market for the coal, that we may expect an increase in employment with respect to a possible callback at the McCoy Elkhorn operation. And that would also be an increase in the expected coal production during the coming year, depending upon how much coal they could produce. So that would have some impact on the severance tax proceeds during the coming year. It's difficult to put a handle on that, given the way that severance tax is computed. In addition to the good news from McCoy Elkhorn, and the fact that it looks like that the coal price in the market generally for utility coal will increase by $3, EQT, a couple years ago, ended drilling production in eastern Kentucky. They were so enamored with their Marcellus shale findings in Pennsylvania that they completely, pretty much closed their operations here and employees they had here. They are coming back, and they are in the process of permitting and drilling again in eastern Kentucky. I don't know how many wells they have drilled, but it does appear that you're going to see an increase in activity and investment by large gas producers in the in Pike County. As all of you know, the mineral tax, we get half of that back, and the mineral tax is a, given, we're already 53, we're already the largest gas producer in Kentucky, produce about 53% of the natural gas in Kentucky. So increased production in natural gas goes to your bottom line a whole lot quicker than coal does. So those aspects, we think are a couple of positive signs that you should be informed about.
Sixty-five-hundred-plus natural gas wells in Pike County, and of course, EQT is half of those. And we have more, they have approximately 2 million acres under lease in several states, which is central Appalachian State. And Pike County has more under lease than any other county to EQT, ectable gas. So I think as we project, and that's all we do, is project, and adjust the budget as the year goes by, we monitor the budget. We monitored the budget this year probably more closely than we've ever monitored due to the shortfall of 5.8 million of last budget. And with the assistance of the folks sitting most, sitting in here this morning, our commissioners and directors, we was able to cut expenditures drastically in every department. We was able to computerize from almost 100% paper, and this is amazing, to 100% computers in our solid waste department. With the study that we had done, with the implementation of the study that we had done, and with the discovery of maybe, gosh, I don't know, a few thousand people not paying the garbage bill in the county. So we discovered that. I had always said that I believed that the, that 25% of people was not paying the garbage bill in the county, and I think pretty well held right when we finally, we discovered it, mailed out the letters and got them back, and we discovered that that was pretty well what it was. So that, budget-wise, is going to help. So hopefully, the jail budget, I think it was, had some overtime still in it, but hopefully we can work with the jailer this year, the new jailer come in for half of the year, and work on the overtime at the jail, and bring that in line, and of course, save money in regard to the jail. So next, we will go to Finance Director, and see if you have any statements you'd like to make, then we're going to Treasury.
No, not this time, Judge.
Madam Treasury, you are the key to pulling this together, and as we do a budget, you and I have the awesome responsibility, in the end, with this court, to present a budget that's a workable budget, that's realistic as best you can be when you have to make projections, and you have to make projections on the production of, come around our energy sources, Madam Treasury.
Yes, there was a presented a balanced budget for the magistrates from the judge, but since then, we have received the fourth quarter of the coal and mineral severance. We were $400 and some thousand short on our projections for the coal, which is the amount we have in this budget from last year, the same that was budgeted. The mineral was set at the 1112 or 1213 year, we received, 1112 year, I believe it is, we received $3 million and some dollars. Haven't heard that the price is supposed to be going up, but I've seen since reports in Lexington Herald that our billions per cubic yard or cubic foot is, has been stale since 2009. It's not doing anymore. It stayed under the 300 billion mark. We're a million over on what we actually received in mineral severance in this next year's budget. So I have concerns whenever we have 1.4 or 1.5. Then we also took a hit from the tax collections. There was a law change that said the school board was to receive 100% of their fees. They didn't have to divide it up 75-25. So that was a $96,000 hit from the sheriff's 25% fees that we've returned to the county. And the real property taxes are about 100, we budgeted them in this 14-15 year, the same as what we had budgeted for 13-14, and it's about $100,000 short. All that said, we've got to still worry about the tangible, where the coal companies have pulled out, what the assessments are going to look like coming in next year, especially on tangible. So just in that, I have concerns of about 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars.
Madam Treasury, let me ask you on the 1112 budget, in regard to coal severance tax, that figure was 4 million, 308, 321, 23?
Okay, maybe I used the 1213. I couldn't remember from, it was 3 million what we actually received.
Yes, and then you proposed this budget, 4 million, 92, 600, and that is lower than what your other budget was, am I correct?
He's talking about coal, not mineral.
Not mineral, I'm talking about coal only.
I'm talking about coal.
I have it here if you want to.
The 13-14 budget, we budgeted 4 million and 92, 600. We only received 3 million, 653,009, 2620. The 4 million and 92 is what's in next year's budget, so we know we were already short to begin with by 350.
It was, was less than the year before.
Then in the 1112 year, as I said, we actually received a little over 3 million, and we put 3 million in here, but we only received this year in mineral, 2 million and 53,000, so we're right at a million dollars over budget for what we actually received this year.
Anybody else have any questions in regard to the mineral, projected mineral and the life that we received, the report we got in regard to coal severance tax?
Judge, John, what you're saying is, our budget proposal is expecting to get more than what we actually might not get, so we
Correct.
We could go in, in the red there, a million.
I'm looking at about 1.6 million to 1.7 million at this point.
1.6 million to 1.7 million. So that's quite a bit of money we're going to have to try to figure out to subsidize for that, right?
You know, if we had a crystal ball, we could really foresee what was going to happen, but I, and as you all know, I'm very conservative with my numbers. I don't like inflating numbers in order to hope and pray that it comes in, because we are looking at people's lives whenever these things don't come in, and come into fruition. So I'm just trying to let you all know ahead of time that hopefully, they will come in good, but we don't know that, and we've got to have a backup plan as to what we can do to capture this kind of money if it does not come.
I guess you've got some plans, don't you?
I defer to the Assistant County Attorney.
I would defer to somebody else, huh? That's the business of this court. I think what you heard is some optimistic projections from the deputy judge and the judge, and then maybe, not maybe, but a more conservative outlook from the Treasury, and certainly, you know, that's good. You get both sides of the coin, but, you know, I just got to say that there is no crystal ball on this table, and you all know what's in the kitty, and you know what's at stake. And I just have to defer Judge to this court's wisdom there, that, you know, there's all sorts of things this court can do to move money from here to there, and it's not the county attorney's position to make those recommendations.
If I can ask a couple of questions. So, John, your concern is that we're being overly optimistic on the revenue side of the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And short of additional revenue-producing options for the county to consider, the only other option is that we have that 2.4 million dollars that we received from the Purdue Pharma, so.
Correct.
And that money is, it's, we have it in an account, it does not have any strings attached to it, although we've talked about using it to build, renovate the Hall of Justice. That's, there's no strings attached to that money, that we have to use it for that.
That is my understanding.
Okay. So it may be an option for us then to kind of put a halt to what's going forward over at the Hall of Justice, to see how this budget develops over the next six months, eight months, and see how the revenues come in. If the price of gas goes up, then that should take care of the revenue side, and we should be in fairly good shape. If the price of gas goes down, and coal goes down, and you don't see the recovery at McCoy Elkhorn, and the recovery of gas prices like we are hoping, then we would still have that money there available to close the gap on the budget for the rest of the year, so.
I do know of two things that need to be addressed at the jail that we had considered using this money for. One of them, we paid for in our accounts payable this time, is $21,000 for capacitors, which I do not believe takes care of still the chiller issue.
Is Terry Rogers in here?
Yeah. Terry Rogers, that still does not completely get us back up with the chiller, does it?
I would say he was here.
I don't think that, Madam Treasury, is an issue, just because, if I could interject.
But there may have to be off the 2.4, at least maybe 100,000 to get the jail into capacity of what they need, because if you don't have the jail and the third and fourth floor working, it's not going to matter anyway.
Madam Treasury, if I could interject, I don't think that is an issue. Perfection has picked up the chiller out back. Jeanie, am I correct? Is that how we understand it? If not, if you don't understand it, would you go get on the telephone with the felon in Cincinnati and ask the question?
I'll get him on your cell phone and bring him to you.
Would you do that, bring the interpreter back to us?
Terry Rogers just was there, if you can get Terry to let us know.
The foul smell is thrown out of where Beth and Phelps, we need, tell him to go file subpoenas.
But let me let you know, the money is not in a separate account, it's with our consolidated account, because when we got the money, I asked, do I need to set it in a separate account? And the direction was to put it, it is line itemed in the general fund, and that's why you'll see such a big carryover in the general fund of 3.3. That includes the 2.4, and then there's also under 001, 5087, 571, I believe is the correct code, there's a 2.4 allocation. So it's inside the consolidated account.
For the court's information, they are outside chiller, and then they're a unit on the inside. Perfection has got permission from CAECO that they will, that you have to have one unit to blend in with the other unit, that they work together. They have agreed that that will be financed and added to what we have down there, already been done, I understand, by CAECO. So Jeanie, if you will get that.
I didn't think in the last meeting we have perfection, you cannot add to this lease without going through the lease again.
You might get him on the telephone, we'll give you that.
Judge, while she's getting on the telephone.
That was the thing that perfection said, it's a done, it's done, it's a bond. You can't add to the bonds. The bonds are sold. That would have to be another lease completely. CAECO is 1-800-264-5226 is CAECO's number. You can't do bonds, it would have to be a completely new lease.
I think that's something the county attorney would have to advise, so Madam Treasury, I think you're probably right, I don't think that's the way that it was handled.
The bonds were sold, and in that perfection group meeting we had, they said you can't go back to CAECO for it, it has to be a completely new issue, because the bond's already been sold, and it's took care of.
I don't think that's how this was handled, Madam Treasury, so we'll get a next one for the court. Any other questions?
Judge, I have one. On our debt service toward the Hall of Justice, since we have control of coal severance money again, can we not use that money to pay our debt service off over there to our state?
Madam Johnson, I made the announcement that there are meeting tomorrow here at my office with Mrs. Thomas from the Ad District, who will prefer for us an application that will be submitted to the state to meet our top priority, both top priorities. One was the top priority of the property, of the debt service, the other one was the property at Verge and the property at Phelps. And you and I had a discussion on the property at Phelps, and my discussion with the school superintendent, which informed me that the playground at Phelps should be with their sports complex. And if that's so, that solves your problem. But the problem at Verge and Long Fork has not been resolved, am I correct, Mr. County Attorney?
Not been resolved.
So the debt service, tomorrow, a meeting will be held, and that, I don't know the total amount of that, we can get it for you, Madam Finance Director, we can get both of those.
I think it was only 400 and some thousand for the next two years.
Which will be deducted from whatever what the projected deficit would be under that scenario as presented by the Treasury.
Except for 21,000, we paid for the pastors for the outside chiller, that'll deduct off.
Coal severance money, rather, is coming in. I understand what John said, that we have full control over that coal severance. But the question was, are we going to be allowed to pay our debt service with that money?
That's a good question, Ms. Schottson, because we're not sure how they're going, the way it's listed, it says Pike County Fiscal Court, Economic Development and Industrial Development. So therefore, what we'll have to do is prepare an application to show that this does affect economic development, so, in the county. And if we can show that to the satisfaction of the Department for Local Government, then I think we will be okay to do that. And that will come through the court, a resolution for the court to do that application is all that will be needed to send it to Department for Local Government.
Will we use that money in the past for debt service?
Yes.
But it's according to how they put the language into the bill as to how it's been able to be used before. This seems like it tightens the reins on what it can be used for.
I don't know that I agree with that, but if you look through the appropriation list of the severance tax projects, you'll see any number of debt service allocations, and I hardly see how they could differentiate this one from those that are already in the budget. I think it's
True, but how many years have we heard from our representative and senator that they don't allocate for debt service on Pike County?
We always hear that, but I don't know why we're a special beast all of a sudden.
Can we include with our application the various examples?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Martin County's got quite a bit.
My conversations with that agency are the same as the Finance Director, it's this. Work with us on the wording, and you'll be eligible. So I presume that's what we're going to do, is work with them in regard to coming up with the verbiage that's put in the application with with them in regard to coming up with the verbiage that's put in the application with Ad District will power for, and I don't see any problem.
Judge, we got this approved and we get the money that would resolve all our problems , Jonathan, rather with our budget that would give us.
No, it's only for what they had requested whenever all these projects went to the legislation was only 400 some thousand, which was for two years of debt service on that third and fourth floor. There's still more due on it till 20. I'd have to go back and see when it ends.
About 15 years, is it?
I think it's 13 or 15 more years.
Well, Madam Debt Service Court, the.
The jail?
The jail on our.
We just refinanced that, so that's another 20 years on it, I think, or 25.
Can we use that money for that too?
If that's what you also choose to do and make the application for.
Chiller or something more to jail.
How much?
Does the inside chiller still need to be replaced, the 60 or 80,000 dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to be on it.
It's supposed to be on that renovation money, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're going.
That's in, that's separate from the 21,000 that we paid for the outside capacitors and stuff. So another 60 to 80, so you're looking about 100 some thousand to get the chiller.
I think perfection priced at 106,000, but if we don't have to pay taxes and stuff, well, it comes down to about 80 some thousand.
Right.
That's in that bill?
It's in that package.
That's in that package.
That's what I just told them.
What kind of taxes, H.R.?
Now, on this budget.
No, it's to be allocated out of that money that's to be used to renovate the third floor. Is that your understanding correct?
You get Matt on the telephone for him?
I've called for him, Judge. He's either calling my cell or your cell. He's a new father and he's kind of out of place, but somebody's trying to find him for us.
And I talked to him about three weeks ago and he said, every problem solved. And also, Terry, he said that they tied the inside unit to the outside unit and wanted reimbursement for the money that was given on the inside.
You're not going to let this big ass hit.
So that's another, what, 21,000?
Yeah, when they're on their, they're, they're here today to look at your problem.
They've looked at it two or three times, Terry. They, they know what they need to do and I know and you know, they just need to go do it.
I told him today, the only way he's going to do it, change it up.
Wait a minute, we're on Pike TV and we're getting.
I don't care where we're at. We have problems in the court house somewhere.
Then the other thing that you all need to be looking at too, as a court, we need to get Kelly Harding in here, who was representing with CAECO on our health insurance. Due to the Obamacare, starting July 1, we're going to have to reduce the hours that our employees are working that are not full-time. Or during the lookback period, as of right now, the way the law is written, come July 1 of 2015, if an employee has worked more than 30 hours per week or 120 in a month, you're going to have to offer them health insurance. If they take that, you know where that's going to send our health insurance out the roof.
What's that lookback period back to?
July 1, 2014 to 30th, 2015. It's going to be a whole year.
Okay.
According to what we're being told now, and as they said, they may come in today and they've rewritten the legislation or they've put things on hold and it's just a moving target with them as to what the Obamacare means to us. But as right now, CAECO is recommending, we start July 1 to cut back on employees.
Is that an average per, per, I mean, so like, just like our lifeguards?
No, seasonal people can be excluded.
Okay, weed mowers?
Seasonal people can be excluded.
I should tell you, I'll let them do that.
You all, you all put people in there for somebody who's off on workers' comp. You put somebody in there who's off on sick. If you let them stay off a year on workers' comp, that's going to kick us into people. And just like the jail, he's running nine people at over 40 hours per week. So that could be a potential of nine more people and at 15,000 in a year to be a family plan, you're looking at a lot of money to be added to our health insurance.
I was just going to say, for example, we just.
Or 18,000.
This court just hired a temporary, well, a temporary maintenance person over at the garage for jail. That's been a temporary position for I don't know how many years. Clearly, we couldn't continue to do that. And that's just one example.
John, I'd say we got eight or 10 countywide that's working, kept representation. Maybe more, but Jonathan.
That's what I'm saying. If we don't watch and stay within the, because we're going to have to go back and you have to do what they call it payer play census. If we've played, then we're going to have to pay whenever they look back and see that these people have actually worked this many hours. They're going to make us come July 1 of 2015, offer them health insurance. Now, it is up to them if they want to decline, but we have to offer it. And if anybody doesn't have health insurance, I cannot imagine them not wanting.
That's 2015, not July 1.
Yes, but the lookback period's going to start July 1, 2014, for the whole year.
And you have to offer them the same benefit, the same policy that we offer the other employees?
I think there can be some, be some changes, but you still have to be within the guidelines of the Obamacare. Kelly can do more at explaining and doing that than what I can. I'm on the bigger picture of it, of trying to keep our costs down as much as I can.
We're going to be another Walmart.
Yeah, it can be like a bear, but as long as it meets the Obamacare requirement.
We're going to be like Walmart, working back 2025.
We're in a work session, Matt, and we're, we're wanting to address this chiller. I'll put you on the speakerphone and this is on Pike TV.
Okay, good.
On Pike TV. Matt, the treasurer has raised the question in regard to our budget and we're working into it. And it's a good question to raise, because we need to discuss this and make sure we all have the same understanding. The chiller, the chiller problem that you and I have discussed probably three or four, five or six times, and you, you've been here, you sent a crew up about a month ago, you went through the inside unit and the outside unit, and to tell the court where that stands in regard to what effect it may have, and of course, we'll probably have to make that decision on our upcoming new budget.
Okay. Well, the cooling tower on the chiller, as the judge called it, is a piece of equipment that maintains a cool substance to the actual chiller that's inside of the maintenance room in the bottom of the Hall of Justice. It has deteriorated to a point where it will, it will eventually fail. And what we did over the last month, we added a deep up the bottom of it to give us another couple of months of life of it, so that it would burn until we figure out what we can do with, with putting that, putting in a new cooling tower for the 300 ton chiller that's in the, in service of the Hall of Justice.
How much would that cost?
Okay, it's, but there is a, there's a point that that needs to be replaced. We didn't do it under the performance contract at that time because of the issue with that price for that piece of equipment, cash flowing and, and working within the payback criteria of the performance contract.
How much would replacing that chiller cost us, Matt?
I think we're right around a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit less. I think we would, we look at that as not prevailing weight stuff, so, because it's under 250,000 dollars if you did it directly that way. The other way that can be done is that you can, you can call it a phase two of the performance contract and put it in there and have CAECO finance it over a period of time and keep the savings to pay for. I'm, I'm not sure. The judge got the initial, I know he did. The initial finding so far that we're, in six months, it looks like we're about 20,000 dollar tires in savings and we, we protected for the whole year. So we had a plan on the savings side of it. We'll lose some of those savings as the cooling months come on and use more electricity, but we'll still be way ahead of the, the projected savings on the energy side of, of the guarantee for that program.
And Matt, that does not include the 21,000 that we've just presented to the court for payment on the Johnson controls to fix the capacitors on the outside part that is.
It does not include that part as well.
Correct. And I think you were in that meeting and we had agreed that we were going to use that renovation money at that time instead of going back to CAECO. Was that not correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I forgot, that is part of the scenario, to use the renovation money to throw that, part of that at the cooling tower, because it is, it's instrumental in keeping and maintaining the heating and cooling and that facility.
Does anybody have any questions for Matt?
County Attorney, have you got any questions?
I've got one about that Phelps deal.
I have no questions. County Attorney, do you have a question? No, I have no questions.
Judge, I've got a question about that unit that we've already paid for that they're not fixing. They know what it needs. And their people done come in and looked at it and told us, we've got a foul smell and they're not doing anything about it. They've had two or three months, let me correct it. And they're blaming Train for it. And Train is not doing anything, so who, who do we go after?
This is not the cooling tire?
No, this is. I know it's Mr. Dotson, correct?
Yes, Hilman Dotson. He talked, I guess, about the, about the situation at the courthouse at Phelps and Baffin and Phelps.
That's happening out of the, well, I think we put in two of the Phelps courthouse. And it's a phenomenon that Train has put a white paper out on explaining the issue. We, we've never seen it before. We're trying to get some reprieve from Train at this point now. We are going ahead and putting in a pre-filter and a post-filter for the air handling unit on the floor that are experiencing this problem. It happens to, it happens during the heating season and once you get the cooling season, when there's a little more moisture in the unit, it tends to dissipate. And well, the, the pre-filter and the post-filter will help that right now. I will, I will stress that if this, if this is about fix that problem with the smell, we will go ahead with and seek more reprieve from Train and actually switch those units out and replace them. And it is that this is, this isn't solving the problem. That will be doing, we'll solve that problem.
Have you had discussions?
Just, just to that problem there.
Matt, have you had discussions with Train? And have they indicated they're willing to do that?
Yes, we have had discussions with Train. They're not so willing to do that. But that's not your problem. My problem, my problem with perfection is that we make sure that the situation is resolved to your, your satisfaction. And regardless of what Train does, we will take care of that problem. We wanted to try to do this next step first before we, when they had switched that up here. But we do have some, so we're up to Train. We'll try to, our best part, but it's not, that's not an issue with, with Pike County and perfection. We will get the, we will do the right thing for you, like we said at the beginning. That if this doesn't work for that, that's not a problem. We will, we will have come up with another solution.
Matt, I've got Savior people and people coming in the courthouse breathing this, and there's a, a white pallid residue. And your employees has said that the problem is where Train has switched over from copper acols to aluminum acols and that is the whole situation. And, you know, it looks to me like you guys could have a little mercy on these people and go ahead and change them out.
Well, if, if you bear with me on this one, and, and humor me, if this, if this doesn't work, that is our next step with that, because I want to talk to Bill Whippert on it. And I'm as concerned as you are. What I'd like to do too, since I got you on the phone, I'll send Jeanie that paper from Train explaining this so that she can see it. And if those post, pre-filters coming don't work on this, for this resolution, I promise you, we will, we will switch those out. I talked to Bill Whippert about that a week and a half ago.
I'm going to ask them.
I think they were up there last week or the week before, putting those filters in. Is that correct?
It's still the same way with your air conditioner or heated. It don't make any difference. They came in last week, was measuring the ductwork, going to put in some, another filter in there to try to stop it. But your tech, tech people said it wouldn't stop it. He said it was a problem with your acols, aluminum from copper. And you know the problem and, and Train knows the problem. Look to me like you guys could get it corrected. If not, next court meeting, I'm going to ask our county attorney to file suit against you and Train both.
Well, I, I want to avoid that as much as possible. I think so. I'll, I'll relay that message to Bill Whippert and we'll have to get some action going with Train and I'll, I'll update you just next day or so. Let me know what's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions in regard to the chiller?
I haven't seen, yeah, until I'm done, I can give a, a firm price on it. I haven't been in the office for a week. I just, I just had a baby, so.
Congratulations.
Kind of getting back, back there, back down there and just get back with the train. I'll be in the office this afternoon and I can get a firm price on that.
Okay. Matt, thank you. Thank you for making yourself available.
Sure, no problem. Y'all have a great day.
Madam Treasurer, back to you. Just thought, you have anything else? We, as I said, we normally, the first meeting we have, it's a little like an organizational meeting. Then we get, get an opportunity to sit back and take a look at where we stand. And then, then we set another work session up.
Well, as you all can see, you have highlighted, the first reading of the proposed budget with any changes as directed by the fiscal court is supposed to take place by June 1. So we're pushing it to do it at the next court meeting. And it's the pleasure of the court as to what you all want and the direction you want me to go in.
Jeanie, when, when is the date of the next court meeting?
Tuesday, a week from today at 10 o'clock.
Next Tuesday at 10. Today's Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
That's a regular meeting next week.
It's a special meeting because we have changed.
To me, what Master Harris brought up too, is about that Pharma money. I agree with him. They're all setting it all aside in case we need it, you know, for the budget.
Then direct to freeze the money other than what we need to do to get the chiller, which would probably be about another 100,000. So you're looking at 120 that's been spent so far. So that'd leave 2.38 million dollars still there, or 2.28.
Yeah.
That could be left to be utilized.
Set that aside and see what kind of shape we're going to be in.
We'll have to invoice an outstanding invoice. This summit has been working on this project on some design. So, I mean, if you're going to put, if you're going to freeze it, we need to make sure we get their invoice cleared up and get them stopped.
That's correct.
Thank you, Assistant, Assistant County Attorney. I was just going to say that.
Yeah, I know about the invoice.
You need to, this court at the next meeting, if that is the pleasure of the court, we'll need to probably rescind that earlier order to, to set that aside. And we need to cut off the time clock on Summit, because they are working on a horrendous application for approval that has to be done by the Department of Corrections right now. And we just, we need to cut them off if that's what, if that's the direction the court is going and it needs to be done and done as quickly as possible.
We can do it by order of the court at the next meeting. It'd be good if somebody would go ahead and call them.
I will.
Go ahead.
I'll call this.
Hold up.
I'll call this and get it stopped.
And too, I'm hearing, I'm hearing some good things on coal too, which I'm not going to mention no names, but Frank is a man for one, that they're facing a mine up on the Kentucky side up on, in Pike County, the company is. I've heard about the McCoy Elkhorn thing. And I'm talking to another, and it's been a meeting, they face signing a contract. They will put several mines there in Pike County.
Just read in the Weston paper today, where the Public Service Commission approved the 8% increase in the price of gas too, so that.
They picked about one of them. Long Ford, John's Creek? That's a rumor, yeah.
Okay, so are we going to present? Is this all we need, guys, at this point in time? And that's the direction you all choose to go in? So we're ready for a first reading with that being froze at the next court meeting?
I mean, it's census, everybody.
Is that the consensus of the court, guys?
To present this budget that we have with the, the change of freezing.
Before we do the first reading at the court meeting, we'll do a vote on that and change all that up, right?
Correct. Yes.
As long as it's a consensus here, we can't take a vote, but it seems to be. I think we're ready for the next court meeting.
That just doesn't have us coming, you know, further into the year of trying to get behind, get out from behind the eight ball, not knowing where things are going to go at this point. Correct.
Stated when we opened, this is a public meeting. If anybody. Stated when we opened, this is a public meeting, if anybody in the courtroom has anything to say to the court, then come forward, please. If not, then we'll adjourn this meeting, and as instructed, Jeanie will...
Don't have nothing for the regular...
Put it out on hold, court will take further action at the next meeting.